Committee on Campus Planning, Buildings and Grounds. Today's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the July 21st, 2015 meeting, and Item 1, amend the 2015-16 Capital Outlay Program for California State Polytechnic University, Pomona, California State University Sacramento, and San Diego State University. Would any committee member wish to remove Item Number 1, the amendment to the Capital Outlay Program, from today's consent agenda for separate consideration? If not, may I have a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda? And a second? Any opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved. Turning then to our discussion agenda. Approval of the draft 2016-2017 Capital Outlay Program and the draft 2016-2017 to 2020-21 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer Steve Relier will introduce the item. Steve?
Thank you, Chair Norton. The five-year capital planning process aims to identify the facility needs of the university to address its aging infrastructure, the need for modernization, and the construction of new facilities that will provide space to accommodate a growing enrollment. In this presentation, we'll provide a brief background on project funding over the past decade, describe the anticipated funding and criteria for projects in the 2016-17 budget year, and outline the draft five-year capital improvement plan for academic and self-funded projects. I will now ask Assistant Vice Chancellor Vi San Juan to describe the 2016-17 Draft Capital Outlay Program. Vi?
Thank you, Steve. Good afternoon. Historically, the CSU has relied on state funding to finance the academic projects in our capital program. This graph displays the funding in millions from 2004-5 to 2015-16 with the primary sources shown in blue bars, which represent the general obligation bonds, and red bars are lease revenue bonds approved by the legislature. With the wall of debt facing the state during the fiscal crisis and competing statewide needs for additional general obligation bond funds, funding options were assessed by the CSU to address the backlog of facilities' needs. So you can see in 2009-10, we essentially dropped to zero and would have been very close to zero with the use of general obligation bonds outside of the two years where the legislature approved additional funds in 10-11 and 12-13. At the same time, we were looking at options to fund our facility needs. The administration was proposing to enhance the capital financing authority of the CSU and the University of California. The administration wanted to establish a single budget for the CSU for both operating needs and capital out needs. And in the years since that statute changed, since June of 2014, policies and procedures for the capital program and capital financing have been in development. The bright green bars represent the capital financing issued or anticipated to be issued under the CSU Systemwide Revenue Bond Program to support the academic facility and infrastructure needs as approved in the 2014-15 and 2015-16 Capital Outlay Budget Request. This slide summarizes the results of the 2014-15 budget. In January of 2015, the Board approved the use of $10 million to issue long-term systemwide revenue bonds to finance the capital program. The bond sale closed in August of 2015, and proceeds are being used to fund primarily critical infrastructure projects based on recently completed utility master plans that were done for each of our campuses. This slide shows the 2015-16 update, and as reported at the last board meeting, the legislature approved the 2015-16 Support Budget, which was significantly more than what was proposed initially in the January Governor's Proposal, with a lot of efforts of folks around this table and our Sacramento governmental affairs folks. As a result, the trustees' budget allocated $25 million to fund capital projects on a pay-as-you-go or debt financing basis for utility and infrastructure projects. In addition, we're proposing to start, because the dollar amount has increased, a couple of replacement buildings and one growth project. And the list will come before you, the actual list proposed for the 15-16 financing will hopefully come back to you in November. So typically, the five-year plan is only five years, but we're showing in this document, the draft, the potential projects that will be presented in November for approval as part of the 15-16 budget. The increase in funding from the legislature late in the budget cycle is a welcome boost to the capital program, as we hope to fund more projects than earlier anticipated in the January administration proposal by roughly $100 million. So by going, we were thinking $6 to $7 million may be available, and we jumped to about $25 million. So that's a significant increase for us, and a lot of projects will get done that would have had to wait two or three years. The next slide is our 2016-17 overview. As Ryan Storm mentioned earlier, the Governor's multi-year plan is about $139 million. I estimated, roughed it to $140 on this slide. And the CSU Support Budget includes a $25 million request for capital financing. We are working to develop a robust program should the $25 million come forward like it had in 15-16. That'll help us address the deferred maintenance backlog and help us to leverage limited funds that may be afforded, assuming the Governor's multi-year plan. In addition, the campus and chancellor's office planners are updating enrollment projections based on the increased enrollment funding received in 2015-16 to review space entitlements in consideration of proposed building renovations, replacement buildings, and new construction to accommodate campus growth. To date, campuses have submitted over $312 million in requests for funding academic projects, and that number is expected to increase by the time we come back in November. Of that amount, we continue to prioritize utility and infrastructure projects and hope to further the design or complete construction of any large new projects that we start in 15-16. Attachment B of your agenda item has the draft list of capital projects, should funding be available in 2016-17. And I would point out that the first priority is $4 million for water conservation projects, and that is proposed to be funded from remaining general obligation bond funds. So there are some remaining funds that we're trying to close out at the state level and be able to recoup those dollars and address some water issues to conserve more water. The remainder of the list proposes the use of both campus reserves and systemwide revenue bond financing to fund the capital program. One of the areas of transition for the Capital Outlay Program is how to better integrate and consider the needs of the academic program with a self-support program, since both of the programs are now using CSU's systemwide revenue bonds as the financing mechanism, and the academic program can no longer rely strictly on general obligation bonds or bonds approved by the legislature. So while the debt capacity and implementation of the Board's financing policy is still under consideration in consultation with the campuses, we are proposing additional changes to the categories and criteria to encourage campus co-funding, apply a limit on the number of debt financed projects, broaden the exemptions to include one project limit, and identify a few of the metrics that will be considered to assess the need for projects. So in saying that, when we have looked at the academic program, we look very closely at the amount of space that a campus has compared to the number of students, and we haven't applied some of the same metrics on the self-support side. So we're trying to look to see how we do that, what should the metrics be, talking with campuses that have student affairs closely in mind in their non-state list in coming forward with the program and the five-year plan. The funding request for academic and self-support projects totals over $618 million for the 2016-17 Capital Outlay Program. The 2016-17 program is the first year of the five-year plan and the action year in the Capital Outlay Program. The amount to complete these projects is about $1 billion, and we're working with campuses to refine the priorities for both core academic projects and self-support projects, so we can better assess financing needs and reduce the number of projects that are brought to the Board as amendments to the capital program throughout the year. The draft five-year plan, which includes 2016-17, totals $8.1 billion and consists of requests of $4.9 billion to support the academic program and $3.2 billion for the self-support programs. Campuses continue to work on refining project requests that will return to the Board for the final Capital Outlay Program request in November. The Board's approval of the draft program supports the submission of preliminary academic programs to the Department of Finance and Legislative Budget Committees this month. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Vi? Are you sure? Okay, then, yes, trustee Eisen.
Do we have, do we have an inventory, in essence, that tells us campus by campus how much we have in the way of facilities devoted to student housing, student services, classrooms, laboratories? Do we have an inventory that tells us so that we could make an assessment of, you know, I mean, XYZ campus has this much square footage, but they have this many students, whereas this other campus has, you know, more square footage but fewer students? Do we have that kind of an assessment that we could look at to make, I don't know if it will help us in our planning, but it could demonstrate sort of the different needs of the campuses?
Yes, trustee Eisen, we do have a space and facilities database, and we use that database an awful lot on the academic side. For the self-support projects, typically we'll have gross square footage, but maybe not all the certain detail on space types within a building. So we're going to look to see how granular we have the data for certain campuses. You know, for example, we may not have a space type as a bowling alley, but we'll have the square footage included as a student union as a whole, for example. And what we've included in our five-year plan in the past is, in our statistical summary, is looking at a projected headcount for a certain campus, actually for each of the campuses, compared to, say, the number of parking spaces that are projected. We do that with housing, student beds also, just to see relative amount of capacity for that enrollment on campus, whether it's parking or student housing. What we haven't done and what we're looking at is, one of the comments from the presidents are looking at the intensity of need. And, you know, student housing helping in a growing community, growing campus, how to help the disadvantaged students that would do better living on campus. So some of the metrics are, can be strictly space and data, others are not. So trying to take some of that into account is going to be new for us compared to what we've done in the past for academic programs.
Well, I wouldn't want to, you know, send you off to be collecting all kinds of data, but if the data was readily accessible and could be, you know, formatted in such a way that we could make some, you know, I understand that there's lots of differences between the campuses that may, may explain various things, but it would be, it may be useful to the Board to see some of that information.
Trustee Taylor.
Vi, regarding attachment aid, the criteria for Capital Outlay Program priorities that you're asking each campus to set, one debt financed academic building, one debt financed self-supporting building, and yet, any project that's donor-supported through charitable contribution would be exempted from that. What about a P3 project, public-private partnership? Where does that fit?
That would likely fit in an exempted project, especially with the private entity bringing the dollars to the table. That'd be my guess.
Any other questions for Vi? Yes, Chair Monville.
Vi, can I say, follow up on that, because I think that's a good point. Would you make the assumption, and any, I mean, not all public-private partnerships would the outside entity be bringing all the dollars to the table as an assumption, right? So what if there was a, you know, if there was a hybrid and the campus was bringing dollars to the table, would that exemption still apply?
It will really depend on the structure of the P3, because there seems to be a line of, the elements of a P3 that would cause the project to be on the campus's credit. So even if it's on the campus land and the campus is providing all the student housing, running the student housing, then it would likely be counted or a certain portion of it counted. But it will depend on the specific project.
As we think about the tea leaves going forward, and the role of P3s, I think will only magnify. I just want to be certain that we take a close look to make sure that the way in which this gets reported and accounted and the rules at play are obviously on the right side of policy and state law in some examples, but also if there are some changes that have to be made in order to help stimulate these relationships, I would really want us to take a hard look at that, to make sure we're not unnecessarily down-regulating the development of P3s because of some set of rules that we don't, come back and take a look at those rules as still necessary in the new world. So, thank you.
Okay. The approval of the draft 2016-17 Capital Outlay Program and the draft 2016-17 to 2021 Five-Year Capital Improvement Program is an action item before the Committee on Campus Planning, Buildings and Grounds. Only committee members may vote at this time. May I have a motion to approve?
Move it.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? The item is approved. That concludes today's agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Norton. I would ask trustees to panic, if you'd please convene the Committee on Institutional Advancement.
Thank you, Chair Monville. I call to order the Committee on Institutional Advancement. On today's agenda, we have four consent items, one action item, one information item. The consent agenda consists of the minutes of the May 19th, 2015 meeting. Item Number 1, the naming of the Seimer Plaza at San Diego State University. Item 2, the naming of the William E. Lionheart Entrepreneurial Center floor at San Diego State University. And Item Number 3, the naming of the Zahn Innovation Platform at San Diego State University. Would any committee member wish to remove any of the items from today's consent agenda for separate discussion? Do I have a motion to approve all the items listed on the consent agenda? Do I have a second? Do we have a second? Do you know if you're on the committee? We have, it's motion and second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the items listed on the consent agenda are approved. I would now like to turn things over to President Hirschman to say a few words about the naming items for San Diego State.
Thank you. You scared me for a minute there. I want to express our appreciation to Bill Leonard and the Seimer Corporation, who each donated $1 million to support the construction of our engineering and interdisciplinary sciences complex. I also want to recognize the Zahn family and the Moxie Foundation, who have donated $5.1 million to create an endowment to support our entrepreneurship programs. The endowment will support the Zahn Share of Innovation, the Zahn Professorship of Innovation, and the Erwin Zahn Spirit of Innovation Prize, which is a $25,000 prize that will be given to a graduating senior who exemplifies Erwin Zahn's spirit of innovation. And we thank you for your support.
Thank you, President Hirschman. Our action item is the designation of the California Maritime Academy as a Purple Heart University. Garrett Ashley, Vice Chancellor of University Relations and Advancement, will present the item.
Thank you, trustee Stupanik. The California Maritime Academy has requested designation as a Purple Heart University. The California Maritime Academy celebrates a rich military connection with many veteran students, faculty, and staff calling campus home. Generations of Cal Maritime graduates have served with distinction in both the Armed Forces and the Merchant Marine, leading to the campus motto, "To work or to fight, we are ready." The entire CSU system shares a deep appreciation for these individuals, yet it is particularly appropriate that the Cal Maritime extend this recognition based on its unique mission and history. Additionally, the city of Vallejo adopted the designation of Purple Heart City and has requested that the California Maritime Academy, as the resident public university, consider this designation. The designation of Purple Heart University is intended to honor the service and sacrifice of the U.S. Armed Forces brave men and women wounded or killed in action. I now turn to Admiral Thomas Cropper, president of the California Maritime Academy, to provide additional detail on this designation. President Cropper?
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Ashley. In spring 2015, our university was approached by leaders from the city of Vallejo, the Vallejo Unified School District, and Solano County Veterans Organizations. These community stalwarts from the region, recognizing the important role that Cal Maritime has played in developing generations of military and merchant marine leaders, brought forward a request that our university be designated as a Purple Heart University. Our regional partners in Vallejo had recently designated the city as a Purple Heart City and designated the stretch of Interstate 80 through Vallejo as a Purple Heart Highway. Our campus community went to work with our Vallejo partners to engage the military order of the Purple Heart, area veterans groups, and local historians to assist in the effort to designate Cal Maritime as a Purple Heart University. As you know, the Purple Heart Medal traces its origin to our first president, George Washington. It has been awarded to service members wounded or killed in combat since World War I. Cal Maritime graduates have been awarded the Purple Heart through several conflicts, but the toll of 11 of our academy graduate lives in World War II set that era apart. 11 lives then meant that 1/4 to 1/3 of an entire graduating class from the 1930s was lost. One of those graduates, Henry Duke McNabb, the only son of a Stockton couple, gave his life in the liberation of Europe. He died on the beaches of Salerno, Italy on September 9th, 1943, 72 years ago tomorrow. Given our long history of educating, training, and developing officers for the nation's armed forces and merchant marine, Cal Maritime would be proud to share in the Purple Heart designation, as a partner with the military order of the Purple Heart, the city of Vallejo, and Vallejo and Solano County veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Admiral Cropper, and also Vice Chancellor Ashley. The designation of California Maritime Academy as a Purple Heart University is an action item before the Committee on Institutional Advancement. Only committee members may vote at this time. Do I have a motion to approve?
I say move.
Do I, is there a second? Any discussion? In that case, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The item is approved. Thank you very much. Our information item is the 2015-2016 California State University Trustees Award for Outstanding Achievement Presentation. The awards are given each year to those students who demonstrate superior academic performance, personal accomplishments, community service, and financial need. Scholarships range from $6,000 to $12,000 to support those outstanding student scholars as they continue their academics. One scholar is recognized from each of the 23 campuses. I'd like to thank trustee Abrio for serving on the CSU Trustees Award Selection Committee alongside many others. The committee was responsible for deciding those scholars who will receive additional recognition, including our top award, the Ali C. Reisner Scholarship. It is a very difficult, one might even say impossible, mission to decide amongst such qualified and deserving individuals. So once again, thank you for serving. With that, I'd like to ask Chancellor White to come to the podium, he already is, to begin this year's award recognition.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Stupanik. The 23 stories in the booklet that is in front of you are profoundly unique and personal, but they speak to a larger truth. The students that we are celebrating today all represent the California State University story, California's story, really, of hard-earned success, of newly-blazed trails, and of mental ingenuity paired with an indomitable spirit. The California State University is better because these scholars are part of our community. Our story is richer because they have each added their own experience to it, and our mission is truer because it manifests in their lives. It is appropriate that the Board of Trustees and all of us pause every year to celebrate these scholars, and I thank all of the trustees, past and present, who have generously contributed to this scholarship program. Particular thanks to trustee Peter Taylor, who this year newly-sponsored a named scholarship in addition to identifying additional outside support. Thank you, Peter. I would also like to acknowledge the members of the CSU Foundation Board of Governors who have helped make this program possible, especially those able to join us here today. Hector Barito, Chairman of the Latino Coalition; Peter Brightbill of Wells Fargo, sponsor of a scholarship for a veteran; Kristen Kellen from Schools First Credit Union, immediate past president of the CSU Alumni Council; Michael Lizaraga and his wife, Oneida; he and his company, Telacoo, sponsor a scholar who is a first-generation college student; Michael Lucky, who is sponsoring today's outstanding scholar from East Bay; Scott Wells from Santee Healthcare. They're all here today, and we thank you for joining us. We also have special guests, trustee emeritus Larry Gould and Padgett Kaiser. Nice to have both of you here as well. I've saved the introduction of trustee emeritus Ali Razi for last because he is first. His stalwart leadership continues to expand this program. He's a member of the CSU Foundation Board and chairs the CSU Trustees Award Selection Committee. The top scholar this year receives a $12,000 scholarship, thanks to Ali and his wife, Anna Shay's generosity. Ali, would you please join me at the podium and offer your comments?
Always nice to see you. Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, Chancellor White. It is such a privilege for me to be part of a process to honor special CSU students. Their personal stories are inspiring. The struggles they faced in their lives and their will to succeed is extraordinary. They excel academically and make a difference in their community. They are great examples of students that CSU empowers and educates. I would like to thank Chancellor White, members of Board of Trustees, the trustee emeritus, and members of Board of Governors, Governor of CSU Foundation, as well as the team, the team at the chancellor's office who made this program possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ali. So I'd like to introduce you to this year's Razi scholar, Christine Gonzalez. Christine, could you join us at the podium? Christine, this year's Razi scholar is an outstanding graduate student working to empower young people through education. Let's hear her story.
I grew up in South Central Los Angeles. We lived in a tiny little apartment behind a liquor store in South Central. It was me and my grandparents and my older brother. I did go through abuse at home, and unfortunately, I wasn't able to get help with that from home. So I turned to my communities, and they were basically the ones that helped me out through that. And it was through community voices that are speaking against violence or social injustice. And it was through community voices that are speaking against violence or social injustice where I grew that passion to give back.
Her experience in the past, but also going forward, really brings together a story of overcoming tremendous personal obstacles with an amazing intellectual ability and brilliance.
In high school, I focused a lot on getting into college, and I went to after-school programs by organizations around Los Angeles, and I taught sex education. I loved engaging with the students and talking to them and them talking to me, asking questions. And then from there, I decided that I wanted to continue my studies and I joined the Master of Arts Program in Sexuality Studies at San Francisco State.
And she's been a stellar student with the difficult context of economic hardship, having to support herself through school.
The odds were absolutely stacked against her from an early age that she would ever go to college, let alone graduate from college and now be getting a master's degree and excelling as a student here.
This determination that she's had from a very young age to want a great deal for herself, and that's impressive about her.
After graduate school, I definitely want to stay working within the community for the community, and I definitely want to stay working with youths, especially around LGBT issues, getting them access to education or health services.
She's still discovering the power of her intellect, but it's so wonderful that she came as a young professional who wanted to become a more informed professional, and she's been identified as an up-and-coming scholar.
This award basically has helped me to acknowledge my accomplishments. So it's only recent that I've started being proud of myself and recognizing that I've come through a lot, I've gone through a lot.
The future is hers. She can go any direction she wants with this now.
I'm very grateful.
So Christine, we applaud you and we commend you. Would you like to share a few words with us?
Thank you, Chancellor White. On behalf of the fellow recipients here, I just want to say thank you for believing in each and every one of us. I've gotten to know the scholars today in depth, and everyone is exceptional. And because of that, I know that the recipients here today will carry on the legacy of this award and of our CSU education into the communities that we're working for. So thank you once again.
Well, thank you, Christine. And I would like to ask Chair Monville and trustee Stupanic to join us at the podium. And we're pleased to introduce the 23 recipients to you today. Trustee Stupanic will call each of them forward and receive a certificate of recognition. Stephen?
Thank you very much. We're going to start with our trustee emeritus, Ali C. Razi scholar, Christine Gonzalez. There she is. Don't disappear on us here. She is a graduate student at San Francisco, majoring in sexuality studies. After working as a sexual health educator in middle schools for several years, Christine began graduate studies to enhance her ability to address issues of inequality and marginalization in the classroom. After graduation, she plans on continuing her work on empowering youth people and possibly working towards a doctorate degree in gender and cultural studies. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Just so the rest of the audience is aware, the rest of the nominees, or awardees as they come forward will be in campus order. So the next one is Charmaine Paruru, a nursing student at Bakersfield and is passionate about helping those in need. Charmaine provides health screening and education to underserved communities and organizes dinners for children and their families through her student nursing association's partnership with the Ronald McDonald House. Her goal is to pursue a master's degree to ultimately provide passionate, optimal care as a registered nurse. Congratulations. Graduated from Channel Islands Nursing Program and later entered a master's program in the School of Business and Economics. Gabriel advocates for health equality as a community health education supervisor for Dignity Health's St. Joseph's Hospitals. Upon completing his master's degree, he plans to increase his role in children's health advocacy to positively impact future generations through disease prevention. Congratulations. Earned her bachelor's degree in biological sciences from Chico and is now a graduate student in biological sciences. Courtney has worked hard to make the campus more sustainable. She's organized green events that have reached more than 15,000 people. Upon completing her master's degree, she plans to pursue a doctorate degree to become a professor and researcher. Congratulations. Dominic Delany is a computer science major, that's my discipline, at Dominguez Hills. Dominic has recently starred in intern with the Metropolitan Water District in its technology department. Her long-term goal is to finish graduate school with a dual master's degree in computer science and cybersecurity. She plans to seek a career in software engineering or information security. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Patrick Michael Sogard attends East Bay and is working towards a master's degree in statistics. Patrick is a member of the American Statistical Association and the Gold Key International Honor Society. He's worked over the summer with the campus foundation to help students improve their math skills. His plans are to pursue a doctorate degree in statistics and become a professor. Congratulations. Recently earned a bachelor's degree in biology and chemistry from Fresno and is currently completing a graduate degree in biology. For a research project, April is testing the effects of caffeine on the memory and lifespan of fruit flies expressing Alzheimer's symptoms. She plans to pursue a doctorate degree in neuroscience and to conduct research that will help those suffering from neurological conditions. Congratulations. Todd Callahan is pursuing a bachelor's degree in public administration at Fullerton. Todd is dedicated to public service, having received the President's Volunteer Service Award from President Barack Obama. After completion of his bachelor's degree, Todd plans to pursue graduate degrees in public administration and law, leading to a career in teaching. Congratulations. Shane Seines recently became the first in his family to earn a bachelor's degree, having completed liberal studies and elementary education programs at Humboldt, and is pursuing special education credentials along with single and multiple subject credentials. As a member of the Student California Teachers Association, Shane has volunteered as a tutor for disadvantaged youth and is especially dedicated to teaching science and math. Heather Valanova Dea is a California pre-doctorate fellow at Long Beach, pursuing a master's degree with an emphasis on medical education. Heather has already conducted clinical research, leading to the development of programs for nonprofits in higher education and public health policy. She plans to obtain a doctorate degree to further her studies in effective clinical teaching practices. Congratulations. Samantha Lorenz is completing a master's degree in anthropology at Los Angeles with an emphasis on bioarchaeology and focus on the evolution of violence. Samantha has participated in intense international investigations and is currently a forensic anthropology intern at the Los Angeles County Department of Medical Examiner Coroner's Office. She plans to continue her research as she moves towards a doctorate program in bioarchaeology. Congratulations. Davine Shoemaker is an undergraduate at the California Maritime Academy, majoring in mechanical engineering while also pursuing a Coast Guard Third Assistant Engineers license. Davine aspires to be a better public speaker, leading him to become the president of the Toastmasters Club while actively volunteering in the community. He's planning to use his college degree and license to make a positive impact on the maritime industry. Congratulations. Jason Rodriguez is majoring in biology at Monterey Bay and preparing for graduate school. Jason tutors other students through the Academic Skills Achievement Program and volunteers in the community, including participating in a foot washing clinic for disadvantaged people in Solana that helps shape his views on health. He plans to pursue a combined MD and PhD program in applied research to better the lives of others. Congratulations. Armando Nuneo is an undergraduate student at Castaic Northridge, majoring in cell and molecular biology. Amanda is a student leader with the National Society of Collegiate Scholars and an undergraduate researcher, participating in an education and research program with the National Institutes of Health. Her goal is to become a cancer researcher while also mentoring inspiring teen parents. Congratulations. Tyler Kent Sullivan is in the Business Administration Human Resources Program of Pomona. Tyler has completed the Air Force ROTC Cadet Program, leading 50 of his peers through drill, leadership laboratories, mentoring sessions, and volunteer activities along the way. Tyler's goal is to complete his bachelor's degree and become an Air Force Space Operations Officer. Congratulations. Yori Zubba is an undergraduate student at Sacramento, majoring in mechanical engineering. Yori works part-time as a physics learning assistant and is active in the Mathematics, Engineering, and Science Achievement Program. After graduation, Yori hopes to work on projects that will empower developing countries and local communities through renewable energy systems and clean water, with the goal of putting residents in greater control of their energy choices. Congratulations. Alexander Soto is majoring in biochemistry as an undergraduate at San Bernardino. Alex serves as a supplemental general chemistry instructor for the Student Assistance in Learning Program and a peer mentor for the Health Professionals Advising Center. He's also a leader with the Medical and Pre-Health Student Society. Alex plans on becoming a physician and is interested in serving those most in need. Edward Perez is a computer science major, working towards his bachelor's degree at San Diego. This year, Edward serves as a teaching assistant for a computer science class, a position that typically would only be offered to a graduate student. Following graduation, Edward plans to pursue a career as a software engineer designing mobile software for companies like Apple or Google. Congratulations. Our next awardee, Matissa Ortiz, could not be with us today, but let me briefly acknowledge that she is an undergraduate student at San Jose, majoring in computer engineering with an emphasis on embedded systems. She aspires to earn a master's degree in both computer science and business administration so she can run her own engineering firm.
Yeah.
Good, I got it. Is a comparative ethnic studies major at San Luis Obispo. Mario's experience of being teased because of a sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, and ethnicity stroked a passion for helping others succeed and achieve theirs. As a first-generation college student, he strives to make his family, community, and university proud. I'm sure you will. Thank you. Nealon Tonwell is a student veteran conducting biology research at San Marcos, interns at an organic farm, works as a science tutor at the Palomar College, and is a STEM ambassador for local youth. She plans to obtain a doctorate degree in plant biology, conduct sustainable farming research, and build a sustainable organization that benefits underrepresented communities and the environment. Congratulations. Danielle Hansen is on pace to graduate from Sonoma with bachelor's degrees in both communications and statistics. Danielle also helped develop and grow the Sea Wolf Scholars Program to assist former foster youth as they explore college and their newfound independence. She hopes to use her experience and education to continue aiding former foster youth as a statistician and inspirational speaker. Congratulations. [applause][1791.51] As they say, saving the best for last, Jose Gondias attends Stanislaus and is working towards a bachelor's degree in chemistry. He serves as the treasurer for a student organization called Out in Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. He plans to tend graduate student and serve the community through teaching and research at the university level. Jose, I know I speak for my fellow faculty members in saying how happy we're going to be to see you actually teaching university. As a matter of fact, quite a few of the scholars today mention their interest in research and education, and I'm thrilled to see such passionate people interested in educating others. As I am confident that all of the scholars here today will make their mark in society through their chosen profession. Trustees, I present to you the CSU Trustees Award Recipients of 2015. I invite everyone to join us in the Wallace Room and foyer for a reception sponsored by Cisco to celebrate our CSU Trustees Scholars. And before we get to the very next part, I've been reminded that for the various sponsors and that of these different scholarships, we're going to want you back up here so we can get more pictures with you with the scholars. Chair Monville, that concludes the business of the Institutional Advancement Committee for today. Do you want to read this other last line?
If we, Padgett, if everyone would come up, we'll do another round of pictures. And then while the rest of us, while we're taking photos, we will reconvene the Board of Trustees since we're ahead of schedules at 8:30 tomorrow morning. So we will reconvene at 8:30 tomorrow morning, and then we are adjourned for the rest of the evening, and we'll see you at the reception.